We'll just, oh Jennifer, you snuck in, I didn't even pay attention, sorry. So we'll just head right down, we got Budget Review, Noxious Weeds.
Good morning, Jennifer Mendoza, can you hear me? With the Noxious Weed Control Program, I can't hear myself as well as I normally can. I think I'm waiting on the presentation to come up on the screen. I wanted to share our program statistics now that 2024 has completed. Last year, we had put together some measurements on how we measure success in our program. And this is essentially that presentation with final stats from 2024. So, we'll go ahead and get started, if you want to go next slide. So, as you may recall, the purpose of our weed laws is to limit the agricultural, natural resource, and possibly human resource loss due to the presence and spread of noxious weeds. So, we work with weeds in terrestrial and aquatic sites, so it doesn't really matter where they are, they exist. Our board was activated in 1974, which makes 2024 the completion of our 50th year of Noxious Weed Control Board efforts in Cowalts County. So, I feel like that's quite an accomplishment. One of our board members was on the first weed board, and we were talking with him at our meeting about what it was like then, and he said they didn't have nearly as many weeds on the list. Their primary focus was Tanzi Ragwort, which is still a focus today. But they were very instrumental in introducing the Tanzi Ragwort biocontrol bug that helps to eat the plants, so that we don't have to do as much weed control, so. That was one of the big projects.
Do you have a person on your board that was on the first one 50 years ago?
He was, yes, he took a break in.
In his teens?
I don't know. Yeah, so, he must have been in his younger day. He took a break from our board for a while, and we reconnected with him a few years back when the position in his area was open. So, he expressed interest at that time in rejoining the board and did the application process, so. It's kind of fun to have him back, get a little bit of historic knowledge, so. Anyhow, within our program, we administer the weed laws, prevent the spread of noxious weeds through education and outreach efforts, as well as various grant programs. And we try to educate and empower landowners to be able to do this type of work themselves, so. We have many resources, which I'll mention throughout this presentation.
Jennifer, how does a weed become a noxious weed?
That's a great question. So, there is a process within the weed laws that allows for any citizen in the state who's being negatively impacted by a plant species to propose the weed for listing to the state weed board. They take proposals through the end of April, and then there is a noxious weed listing committee that evaluates the data presented, so. The person who proposes it doesn't have to provide a whole lot of data, but they need to make a case for it. This weed is overtaking my agricultural pasture, or this weed is invading my forest, or whatever their crops are, they may have various concerns. The weed list committee is made of someone from the WSDA, someone, a couple people from the state weed board, who are often local members of local weed boards. And then a few other industry experts, and they spend a few months evaluating the weed. They look at distribution data, they look at control efforts performed by others, very thoroughly analyze the species. And then, they make some recommendations to the state weed board. The state weed board takes feedback at a public hearing, and then makes a decision following that, whether to list the species at one of the three classifications. There is some legislation going through right now, that is trying to change that process. And it's due to a specific incident, of course. The holly farmers are upset about the recent decision to list holly as a Class C noxious weed, because it is also considered their agricultural crop. And so, they're trying to change the process. However, holly is a very invasive species, and especially in our forest community. And so, there's kind of a battle of agriculture and natural resources in the listing process here, so. If you get a chance to have an ear on House Bill 1707, our weed board has discussed it, and we do not support the changes, so. Contact me if you want to talk further about that.
What? I'm curious, you described the process, and I understand the process, but I'm curious, what's the advantage? Why would a farmer not just take care of it versus report it?
So.
The advantage to them if it becomes a noxious weed?
If the farmer is, if they have it on their own land, that's great, they can take care of it, even if it's not a noxious weed. But oftentimes, weeds spread from neighbors' properties, and your neighbor may not be taking care of it. So, you may be at a constant battle of trying to control something that just keeps re-invading. And so, that is, behind the Noxious Weed Law, we have the ability to then ask landowners to control it and prevent the spread from within their property borders. And so, a farmer may be interested in listing a species that they're continually battling, because despite their best efforts to control it, their neighbors may not be, and it could be coming in from other sides. Does that make sense?
Yeah, it does, it just, neighbors not getting along, I don't like what they're growing over there, so.
Well, there's a, it's more that you can't just like, say any weed, any species could be proposed as long as it's not native. But there has to be good scientific data that supports, yes, this weed is a problem. The weed list committee is very thorough in their analysis. And so, it wouldn't be the case of somebody that doesn't like what's growing on the other side of the fence. They would have a lot more data to back their recommendation. The weed law was definitely created to put the agricultural community in charge of the laws that impact them the most, and that's these laws. And so, by having our local weed board, those are members who, three of five, must be engaged in agriculture. So, they're essentially self-policing the issues that are impacting them the most throughout the state, so. All right, go ahead, next slide.
Let me pause you just for a second. I'm intrigued by the holly problem, because hunting up behind Silver Lake, holly trees out in the woods are very predominantly noticeable. And I heard, a couple years ago, somebody told me that holly had been labeled as a weed. And I've always viewed it, I mean, there used to be a holly farm in Lexington for years. And so, obviously, it's spread by birds eating the seeds and then crapping in the woods, right?
Exactly.
So, I've never seen any type of an attempt by the landowner, in this case, I think, Warehouser, to do anything about controlling what's on their property.
So, up until now, it has not been listed as a noxious weed, and even now, it's pending a definition. And it will be listed as a Class C noxious weed, which allows it to still be sold as an agricultural commodity. But when it escapes the controlled environment of a farm or whatnot, that's when it starts to become more of an issue, so you're seeing it out in the forest. The holly will invade the understory and limit the growth, kind of take resources from the trees that they're trying to grow. It also is not a very good forage for animals, and as, I'm sure as you experience, creates a very dense thicket that can be difficult to travel through. It's also rather challenging to kill, there are methods that we recommend, but for many of those reasons, the way that it spreads outside of its intended environment is the reason it's been brought to the weed board.
So, what's the advantage to me as a landowner, to go through the process and get a holly tree labeled as a noxious weed? At the same time, I'm not doing anything about what's on my property, I don't care, I just want it labeled as a noxious weed. What's the advantage?
The advantage, if you weren't actually going to do anything about it, I mean, it could come back around at you if your local board also decides that it's a high priority. Because then the local board would say, hey, we need you to control this noxious weed that's growing on your property, so that it doesn't spread to others. So, as a landowner who has the species, you may be, I don't want to say implicating yourself, but you may be applying a law, or trying to get a law set that will impact your land. But if you don't have that species, it's a way to protect your land from the possible invasion, because then there is a weed board out asking people to control those species, so that they spread less rapidly. And so, it can help to prevent the spread to your property, if you don't already have that species.
Okay. I think I followed all of that.
Okay.
Do you guys, as a weed board, have the ability to, like, let's say that the state does not grant it the noxious weed designation, but somebody is complaining about it, do you guys have the ability to go in and say, you need to do this, even if it's not listed as a noxious weed?
If it's not listed as a noxious weed, we do not have any legal authority to request control of it. We can educate about the species. So, any species we can educate about, so we have a process to send informational letters that says, hey, this plant is known to be invasive, or this plant is known to be toxic. In case you're struggling with control, here are some recommended methods, but there's no legal standing behind it.
But you can't force compliance if it's not?
Correct.
Okay, good.
All right, so, this slide shows just our weed board and our representatives. We have five citizen members who represent different areas of our county. John Gross is our chair, he represents roughly the Kelso area. Joe Gudino is our vice chair, he represents the Castle Rock area. Dixie Edwards is in our weed area three, representing Longview. Betty Engelmann is in the Kalamah area, and Ben Thomas Jr. is in the Woodland area. So, these members serve at a volunteer capacity to guide the regulations and programs within our board programs, so. All right, so we'll go to the next slide. So, the difference between a weed and a noxious weed is a legal definition. Master gardeners, we define plants or weed as a plant that is competitive, persistent, invasive, and interferes with human activities, and is therefore undesirable. It's the wrong plant in the wrong place, it could be any species. A noxious weed, however, is found by the state weed board to be highly destructive, competitive, or difficult to control by cultural or chemical practices, often threatening agricultural or natural resources. So, there is a limit, a distinction between a weed and a noxious weed, it is a legal definition. We do have 163 species on the list right now, and they can never be native plants. So, if a plant is documented as being native here, such as horsetail, it will never become a noxious weed, no matter how difficult to control it is. So, there are some limitations on how this can be carried out. All right, next slide. So, again, I talked about the classifications. Class A means that those species are required for eradication. And landowners must do everything in their power to fully eradicate and remove the plants from their property. There are 41 species on the list, nine of those are present here in Cowalts County. All of them are required for eradication if present. The reason behind this is they are in the most limited distribution throughout our state, so there are not very many areas that have these plants, and we still have a chance of preventing the spread to new areas. Class B weeds, there are 70 species on the list, 48 of those are present here in Cowalts County. We do require the control of 64 of those species. So, if the few species that are not already present were found, we respond to that with an early detection, rapid response protocol. And that helps us to contain the species in its present area and not spread further, so we aren't creating more weed issues. The Class B weeds, we request that landowners prevent the spread from their property. So, they do not have to fully eradicate those species, but they do need to prevent it from spreading to other landowners. Class C weeds are more widespread in Washington. Often, they are widespread in one area of the state and less widespread in another. Something like English ivy or Himalayan blackberry are two examples of those species, they are everywhere. We have 32 of those species here in Cowalts County, there are 52 on the sea list total. We generally don't request control of Class C weeds unless there is a special situation or a problem impacting agricultural areas next to it. So, we, one of our violations this year was for Canada thistle, which is a Class C noxious weed. But it was because it was adjacent to agricultural fields. So, there are some situational factors that go into carrying out the classification controls. Class C species are generally widespread and very difficult for us to convince people to control, because it's generally the species that their neighbor also has, and they see it everywhere else throughout the county. So, why should I do this on my property? And really, at that point, we're just asking for them to contain it to their property as well, so.
Given how weeds spread, how do you contain it? How do you stop birds and wind and?
So, with something like Canada thistle, you would prevent the plants from producing seed. So, that would mean either spraying the plants before they flower, so that they don't produce seed, or once they're flowering, deadheading them, so that they don't produce productive seed that can fly around. In the case of berries, you would control it along your border, so that it's not taking over your neighbor's fence. You can harvest all your blackberries, so that the. You can harvest all your blackberries so that the birds don't spread them, but you know, there are so many of them, you can make a pie. But it is a difficult factor, but oftentimes it means preventing the seed from being produced and putting it in the trash so that it doesn't go anywhere.
Well, in the case of a holly tree, with the, you mean, purposely grow those for the berries and for the looks for Christmas wreaths and that stuff? And how in the heck are you going to control that for a holly tree?
Well, education is a good start, and just monitoring the areas around the farm might be a good way to start. Making sure that people aren't dumping their wreaths or holiday decor in a random natural area. So education is a really good place to start with that one.
Who determines what is a native versus a non-native plant?
When I'm wondering that, I go to the Burke Museum, or not the Burke Museum, the Burke Herbarium up in Seattle and see what their plant records say. There, there's a couple of organizations that track that, but I usually rely on their data.
Okay.
So we have many weeds to control here in Cowalts County. If you want to go ahead and go to the next slide. It is the owner's duty to control the spread of those weeds. So that means keeping it from moving to other people's properties. As we discussed, the Class As required for eradication. Bs and Cs are control from their property, so keeping it from spreading. There are different requirements for forest landowners that have to do with harvest periods, but I'm not going to go into those details today. All right, next slide. Okay, so our program, we're, I feel like we're a relatively small program. We have our weed board, which I already discussed. I'm the coordinator. We have an admin assistant, two field inspectors. And this year will be the first time that we have a nine-month seasonal noxious weed specialist. That person will be the lead of our grant crews that carry out a lot of our on-the-ground, boots-on-the-ground control work throughout the summer and a little bit in other seasons. So we're really looking forward to having that person onboard so that our inspectors can stay focused on inspection instead of getting their boots on the ground with treatments. So, very small program. We do hire a summer seasonal crew, usually two to three people through a temp agency to help carry out treatments, mostly within the Mount St. Helens Monument. All right, next slide. There are many program benefits to our community. So our board likes to focus on education rather than enforcement. So when we identify weeds on a landowner's property, we send them an informational packet with an informal request to control. The landowner ideally will control the weeds and prevent them from spreading at that point, therefore meeting their noxious weed requirements within the law and preventing the spread, leading to fewer weeds overall in our community. When you control something early, or you have a smaller infestation and you can get on top of it early, it overall reduce your control costs. Unfortunately, many weeds can be viable in the soil for many years. So once it's established in an area, it's something that needs to be monitored for some time. But if you can catch those things early, you will have a lot less control costs associated with your infestation. And so our goal is to go out and prevent the spread and monitor those known areas of infestation to make sure it's not spreading to other landowners. Besides that, we have many benefits to the community. We're reducing our overall impacts to agriculture, decreasing toxic plants within our community. Some of our species are considered to be highly flammable, such as Scotch broom. So when we're asking to control those types of species, we're reducing the wildfire risk or possibly erosion-type issues that may be happening on a stream bank through the presence of Japanese knotweed. We're also improving habitat for wildlife and pollinators, enhancing recreational opportunities in our community. And sometimes with really aggressively rooted plants, we may be protecting the structural integrity of roads or structures. I've had a couple of instances where we've had knotweed roots growing up through somebody's foundation into their house. And that's not a situation we would wish upon anyone. So trying to catch these things before those types of structural damage occur. And then also by reducing the spread of noxious weeds, we are supporting the native plant biodiversity within our community. So overall, the benefits are broad, even though the ability of our program is very focused. All right, next slide. Okay, so when we're looking at our performance, we look at education and outreach. We look at our inspection statistics. We look at our grant projects, and then we also look at our financial stability. So these are the general topics I'm going to go over. Next slide. In terms of our education and outreach, our process, we do attend many educational events throughout the year. I provide several presentations through the Master Gardener Program. I've also provided many group presentations to groups who ask. And we participate in our local fairs and other activities like Earth Day or maybe the Forestry Field Day hosted by WSU. So this last year, we participated in seven events. I did 15 different presentations for a total of 22 outreach activities, which is, I think, only one or two above last year, but there's only so much time in the day. However, our estimated contacts, we think we reached about 1,500 people through all of those events. So one of the metrics that we'll be looking at at the end is how many, what is our outreach total? How do we, how many people in our county do we think we reached? So we had about 1,500 here in education and outreach. Next slide. Through those outreach events, we also track what materials we're giving out so that we can see what the community is seeking help with, in addition to what we're sending. Two of our most popular publications that we produce in-house are our Noxious Weed List and our IPM Guide. IPM Guide is our integrated pest management resource list. It's got information on attacking your weed infestation in multiple ways, and then it also has resources such as herbicide dealers within the county or contractors who may be able to help carry out your work as a courtesy resource. So we give those two out with every letter that we send, in addition to it's some, some of the more popular publications at our events. Our fact sheets to us indicate which species we're seeing fluctuations in. So when we track that from year to year, we can see which years a certain species might be more popular. So that's helpful information to us. Go ahead and go to the next slide. We are also very lucky to receive materials, outreach materials from our state weed board. One of our most popular publications is a Small Pocket ID book with identification tips for Western Washington's most popular noxious weeds. Last year, we gave out over 600 of those, and we ran out towards the end of the year. So while we asked for more this year, that was about as much as we'll get for this year as well, due to their budget constraints. But the materials that we get are very nicely published, and we track them so that we know how many to order for the next year, and then how many people we've reached as well. Some of our other popular publications, we have a Garden Wise book, which is, don't plant this invasive plant, but do plant these alternatives, which may be similar. And then we also have a Toxic Plants book, which is really helpful for any landowner with livestock to know which plants not to have on their property due to toxicity. That extends outside of the noxious weed definition. So, okay, go ahead, next slide. Okay, so when we do our inspection, we have two inspectors who drive around the county looking for weeds. They use our existing dataset to identify neighborhoods to look at on a daily basis, based on whatever weed species is most identifiable at that point in time. So at any given point, they may be out searching for anywhere from three to 10 different species in a week. Everything comes up at different times, so you may drive by a property and not see something the first time you're there, and then you come by two months later, and by golly, whatever it was grew taller, and now you can see it. We do most of our inspections from the road, so we're not walking on people's properties unless we're invited, unless they need help identifying their weeds, which we also do. So it's a pretty streamlined process, but there are many limitations to it. Like, we can't see behind fences, or the terrain in our county often limits our sight distance. So there are some limitations to it, but we do the best that we can to try to detect those species early enough for it to be considered a small infestation. We have nine of our Class A species I mentioned, and between Class B and C weeds, we have 80 of those present. So really, we're looking at almost 90 weeds on a yearly basis that we have present in our county. So, go ahead, next slide. These are some of the statistics for our noxious weed data collection. Now, this one is a timeline showing just overall number of points that we're collecting throughout the year. The white line that peaks at the very top is this last year's data, and the gray line just below it is from 2023 and then prior years. We're kind of just building upon our success here. In the earlier years of our, of my time here at our program, in 2019, 2020, we only had one inspector, so we were very much limited by the amount of time that they had to collect data. Now we have two inspectors, which is wonderful. As you can see, that's helping us to collect more data and help more landowners. But it's very obvious where specific species are peaking. So that very tall spike in the middle is what we call tansy season. It's an entire month-long event in which we receive many calls from throughout the county about their neighbor's tansy. So in addition to that, we go out and survey and try to be proactive, get to those infestations before we receive calls on them. But we can't be everywhere, so we do appreciate when landowners call and suggest roads that they may have seen tansy on, so that we can make sure we're reaching out to those landowners.
So is the spike every year due to the fact that you have more people out looking? So this, this represents locations that have noxious weeds?
Yes.
What are the points collected on the side there?
So the total points collected is the number of points that our inspectors have put into the map each year. The one piece that skews the data a small amount is that with normal inspection, our inspectors collect one point per parcel. So if you own two parcels and both have weeds, that will be two points. If you have one parcel with two species, that'll be two points. But we only put one point, no matter how large or small the infestation is. With our grant projects, which also get grouped into here, we collect points wherever we find them on a property. So there might be two, there might be 50 points for a specific species. So that's a small limitation to that. But based on my knowledge, knowing when those grant projects are happening, I know that in the middle of July, those grant projects are not what's happening. And so, and future slides will show our top species and which letters were sent. So it's a, it's a data trend that we watch to see if there are new spikes happening or maybe reasons that something dropped. Like, last year, for example, in July, we did have one staff member on vacation and something else happened with somebody else. So we had to dip in the middle of tansy season, which was very difficult to deal with, but we made it work. So we just kind of watched this trend to see how early and late, what are the spikes, and try to plan ahead so that we're not taking vacation during those spikes. All right, next slide. Oh, go ahead. Yep.
Is that cumulative?
So, no, these are per individual year. So oftentimes, weed infestations will return, and sometimes we re-record, and sometimes we can see that the landowner has it under control, and we don't re-record, even if we see their dead tansy plants already standing there. There's no reason to re-record that. So, all right, go ahead. So of the 90 or so species that we're on the lookout for, these are the top species in which we collected more than 100 points throughout the year. Japanese knotweed, again, this is one where we have a grant program, so we do collect points wherever we find the infestation. Those bright green that you see is the ones that didn't get a letter, which means that it was part of a grant. So false broom and Japanese knotweed were two of our top weeds that we collected reports on, but most of our work associated with that, we have funding to help the landowners control it. The gray that you see is our request to control letters. So you can see we've sent almost 400 tansy request to control letters last year, representing that same peak that we saw in the last graph. Shiny geranium has quite a following, as well as Italian arum and poison hemlock. Poison hemlock and shiny geranium are Class B weeds. Italian arum and Tree of Heaven are Class C weeds. So we do have a distribution here on A, B, or C. I didn't mention, but false broom is one of our Class A species that we're targeting. So we do have quite the distribution between classes here and frequency of collection. So these are the most common species that we're working with. I'll flip to the next slide. I don't expect you to read this one, but this just shows the variety in species that we collected and how many for points that were less than 100 sites where we collected information. So it's very challenging to keep track of in different times throughout the year, but this is the variety that we're working with. All right, next slide. Okay, so when we're doing inspection, we send a lot of letters. Primarily, we're sending request to control letters, but we do also send out informational letters when something is maybe just a few plants and not very threatening. Or we send out notice of violation letters when the request to control letter hasn't worked. The notice of violation letter is the first official step in the legal process. So when you read through the weed laws, it says, when a weed is found, the weed board must send by certified mail a letter requesting control within 10 days. We take an educational step before that. Our request to control gives the landowner 14 days to control it before we follow up again for this notice of violation. You'll see in 2021 through 2022, the notice of violation is a very small number at the top. That is the year we transition from one inspector to two inspectors. And since we've had two inspectors, they are able to spend more time following up with the landowners, and we have a less need for sending notice of violation letters. Notice of violation letters, landowners refer to them as nasty grams or whatnot, but in reality, that is the legal step that we could be taking on all landowners. Certified mail is much more expensive than regular mail. So that, in addition to our educational mindsets, that most landowners don't ask for these weeds. They don't know what they are when they appear on their property, and we're trying to give them an educational opportunity to do the right thing without the threat of a violation. So the violation letters has gone down since we've had two inspectors, which is wonderful. They're able to provide a better customer service to all of our citizens. Our request to control letters keeps rising up. Could be a little bit of efficiency in data collection and trying to get those things out, but also a little bit of spread. Look at a slide here in a minute that will explain that a little better. But one of the things that I really like that we've started is a reminder postcard. So for landowners who had a species last year, usually we pick maybe five species to send this on, so tansy, shiny geranium, poison hemlock. We send them a reminder postcard before we start inspecting for those species so that they have an opportunity, we know it's probably going to be there again, to just go out and take care of it. And I think that the landowners who are receiving those postcards, we don't end up sending a letter to, in most cases. So it's kind of a, another educational approach that we're taking. Over the year of 2024, we sent just over 2,300 communications to landowners in trying to inform them of the species in their area. So, okay, next slide. All right, so this one is tracking all of the infestations where we sent letters. So if we sent either a request to control letter or an informational letter, whether or not that landowner met our request to control it. So if they, if they received our letter and they did the proper actions of preventing their weeds from spreading, we close the report. If they did not, we used to unresolved that report. So you'll see that's the gray is the unresolved at the top. And this year, we decided to go a step further and document whether they did partial control, whether it was no control, or whether it was unclear if they did the control work. So sometimes we don't get back to all of the species in time, and weather takes its toll on the plants before we can tell if it was killed by weather or killed by the landowner. So there is some ambiguity there. But it's interesting to note that when you add up our closed reports, so all of the landowners who did their control work and the partial reports, so they made an effort, and maybe they were still working on it by the time we went by, we're still at about 75% of our landowners controlling their weeds without any further necessary things. We still have about 25% who, well, 10% who did no control at all. And often what we see there is it might have been too late, but they will have a plan for next year. And then sometimes it is landowners who are simply non-compliant. So we just have to work harder to educate them.
Is there ever a point where your department goes out, excuse me, where if the landowner gave you permission and said, you come on my property and control the weed?
"You come on my property and control the weeds," do we ever go out and work with them to do that, that we would actually do the control process?
There are some very special case instances that we can do that. We have an exempt program for landowners who qualify for the county's tax exemptions under senior citizen or disabled status. And so if they meet the requirements in that program, we can go out and do the control work for those landowners at no cost to them. They do sign a waiver that says we're allowing you on the property. They just may not be physically able to control that work at all. They may not have any other resources, no family, nothing else that can help them to get these under control. So we do those.
Just that, those two options?
There are grant programs that we have as well. So if it's one of our Class A species, we do help with control on all of those. And then knotweed along creeks, because most landowners can't use herbicides along a creek without the right permits and herbicides. So in those cases, we do help. And then the other case is if we were to actually carry out an enforcement. The law allows us to, if a landowner does not control it within the 10 days of the notice of violation, the law allows us to be able to go and do the control work ourselves and bill the landowner. That's not the ideal situation because we want to, although we do want the weeds to stop being spread, we reserve that for very special cases. So there are some times where we can help and we just need the landowner to be able to communicate with us.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Okay, next slide. So this chart is comparing over the past, I guess, six years from 2019 to 2024, if we ever sent a landowner a letter, whether it was present or absent in 2024. So of all of the six years past data, 62% of those points were absent or we did not re-record in 2024, which means that the landowner has what they need to be carrying out the control work on their property. Of those, only 9% or 300 points were also present in 2024 and had been present in a previous year. And then 29% or 1,000 points were new infestations where we had not identified weeds on their property at any point in the last six years. I only go back that amount of time because that's as long as I've been here, so I'm comfortable with the data that we have. The data that was collected before doesn't have the same characteristics, so I can't confidently say those things. But in the time for the last six years, about 1,000 of the points that we've collected were new last year and had not been on the property before. So that is, to me, a good sign that we're catching that many as early detections. Hopefully, most of those are small infestations where the landowner can put in minimal effort to control it and prevent further infestation. All right, next slide. Okay, so this one is looking at our total assistance that we were able to provide through our various programs. We talked a little bit about grants. Through our grant programs in 2024, we were able to help 165 landowners. Our exempt program, that's the one I just described, where we can help senior citizens, we helped 12 landowners this last year. We have a weed-free hay certification program that is actually part of a national certification. But we had four landowners participate in that program. Our cost share is a really nice program where we can reimburse landowners who are doing their weed control on specific species. They're purchasing the herbicides, they're applying the herbicides to their land and gaining effective control work. We can reimburse for some cost of the herbicide up to a certain amount. So we had 12 landowners participate in that last year. We do have a disposal program. So when people are mechanically removing their weeds, they're deadheading their plants and trying to dispose of them responsibly. We have disposal vouchers and then we also hold a tansy collection day, where we bring out a U-Haul and ask people to bring us all of their tansy. This last year, we collected just over, a total through the disposal program, about four tons of weed material through that program. So we had 36 landowners participating in that. And then we also have an assistance program where we can lend equipment out. So we have backpack sprayers, weed wrenches, injection guns for knotweed, and a few other items that we're able to loan out. And we had 12 landowners participating in that. So those are some of the various ways that we can help landowners with their weed control efforts and really build a positive relationship. So, next slide. Through those assistance programs, the goals of those programs are listed here. Not including grants, we helped 76 landowners through all of those programs, spending just over $3,000. So overall, it's not costing us very much to provide these assistance programs to our landowners. So we are looking to continue that. We just expanded our cost share program to increase the limit that we are able to reimburse. So it used to be either $210 if you did one plan, which is a 60-40 split, or $350. Now we're looking at a maximum of $400. So we know costs have risen for everything in our economy and we're trying to help the landowners who are carrying out effective weed control with those costs. All right, next slide. For our grants, we have a variety of grant programs that I've talked about. We have a Class A program, so that helps landowners. We go out and do the control work for our Class A species. Especially with false brom, this last year, we significantly increased the number of landowners involved in our programs there. But we get funding from either the State Department of Agriculture or the State Weed Board to help with these projects. Again, the goal throughout the state for Class A weeds is to eradicate them. So they are able to provide some funding for us to help landowners control those directly. We have a partnership with the Mount St. Helens Monument and we do weed control up there. This year, we were able to treat about 100 acres of noxious weeds. And then our knotweed projects are quite time-intensive and kind of one of my favorite projects, honestly. But we get to help landowners who have water bodies running through their property with knotweed infestations. And knotweed is a very aggressive plant. I think of it as more aggressive than bamboo, but it definitely invades along waterways and causes all kinds of water quality issues in addition to habitat issues. So we're really excited to be able to help people with those projects. We were able to expand our project into Clark Creek this year with the help of a conservation crew that was sponsored by the DNR. So we're hoping to continue to build our project in that area. But we've also done work for many years on Abernathy Creek, Mill Creek, Delameter Creek, Monahan, Tootle River. We've also been working in sections of the Calama River with state agencies. And then with the Calitz tribe, we've been working to help with knotweed control on Olaqua Creek. So we have quite a broad knotweed project and we were able to treat about 150 acres this year of knotweed. We also have a very small project with the Columbia Land Trust, which overlaps our knotweed project. But they have some trust property on Abernathy Creek where they're trying to maintain a native plant community. So while we're out there with our knotweed project and another time throughout the year, we go out and help with all noxious weed control, so blackberry even, and they reimburse us for that. So partially, we keep that going because it definitely overlaps with our project and it's a really important area to be in. So we help six landowners with that. We have 42 acres in that project. All right, next slide. So throughout our grants, we were reimbursed for $65,000 worth of work that was performed last year. $46,000 was up on Mount St. Helens. $11,000 was for knotweed projects, just under three grand on our Columbia Land Trust, and $4,500 on our Class A projects. So the little pie charts are different grants-specific. It doesn't really matter to you, but those are the four projects that we're really looking at for grant funding. Next slide. From these grant projects, we typically produce a report. I haven't been able to finish our Mount St. Helens and Class A thistle or knotweed ones yet. They're in progress, so as soon as I get those reports done, I will just forward them your way for your information. But in real time, we do have our false brom eradication GIS story map. So you can click on the link here and explore all of the things about false brom that you may need to know. How to identify it, how to control it, where is it in our county, what partners we're working with, what kind of funding we've had to control it. So this is a really fun tool to really dive deep into that project. Next slide. All right, so of 2024, these were all the grant projects that we had open. Again, we build out just about 65,000. There are some grant projects that will remain open for a few more years. So specifically within the monument, we do have just over 85,000 available for treatment next year and the year following. So we're hoping that that should be enough to continue that project until additional funding within the monument becomes available. Our knotweed project is renewed every two years and we just finished spending what was available at that point in time. But these are the other contracts that we had. Currently, we have 92,000 committed that has not been spent. Timeline on those is sometimes multiple years, so just keep that in mind. Next slide. Okay, so when we're looking at a compilation of our education and outreach, all of our written communications, and then also our assistance programs, we estimate that we interacted with just over 4,000 citizens in Calitz County. We try to look at how is that a meaningful number? So we are looking at households as our meaningful measure and we estimate that we reached about 9% of households in Calitz County through any of our programs that we carry out. Last year, that number was about 7%. So we did increase this last year, which maybe is why it felt so busy. But I think that we will never have 100%. I would really hope that that's not the case. While noxious weeds do impact everybody in some way, shape, or form, I just don't think that that's a feasible goal. So I think just slowly increasing this number over time is our overall goal. All right, next slide. All right, not to put the financials off till the last, but this is an essential part of our program. Obviously, we need to be funded somehow. So we are funded through a special assessment on the land. This is the way that the noxious weed law allows us to be funded. We could either be general fund or we could be special assessment. So the commissioners in years past have opted to implement the assessment on land to fund our program. We have supplemental funding from grants, but our primary funding source is through our special assessment. There is a per parcel rate and then a per acre rate that's applied. So it has nothing to do with values, but rather that there is land and that it is a size. So I think on another slide, I have the rates. But our target is to budget responsibly within the budget that we have and assist landowners in as many ways as we can. I'm going to have you go forward to the next slide.
So is that inclusive of basically every parcel in Calitz County?
Yes.
So do you also address like noxious weed problems if somebody within city limits? City doesn't do it, we do it?
Yes.
Okay.
There have been times where I work with the city code enforcement when there are plant issues that sometimes involve, it's usually blackberry, but sometimes involve other species. But they're more nuisance control, overgrown grass, things like that, that they're more worried about. And we are specific to the species. So there is some balance there. It's also really interesting that some of our cities will assign right-of-way control to the adjacent landowner. So that's sometimes difficult to navigate. Landowners don't always want to take responsibility for what they consider to be the right-of-way and maybe their alley or front sidewalk. But some of the cities do assign that responsibility to the landowner within their codes. So then we have to work with them on right-of-way things too.
Does that include port parcels also?
Does that include what?
Port?
Port parcels, yes. The port parcels are also included. All right, so every month, our weed board reviews our financials. This is a year-end summary. So this looks from the beginning of January in 2024 all the way through the end of 2024. However, we usually review the same sheet with a monthly update at our board meetings each month. So you can see, we started our 2024 year with a cash balance of $130,000. We had $187,000 in our investments. So we started the year with just about $318,000. Throughout the year, we did receive $451,000 in special assessments, which is slightly more than we budgeted. Sometimes we have properties that don't pay their assessments and those funds come in when they are finally paid. So there may be some funds coming in from two years ago if somebody was behind on their taxes. And so sometimes the amount is over what we budget because those funds finally come in. When we do our budgeting, we only budget for the amount anticipated in the year comings, what's going to be billed out. Because of some things that happened last year, we budgeted $449,000, but I think about $490,000 was billed out and that was the inclusion of the state and public parcels that we were still trying to determine at the time of budgeting. So we did bill out more. There should be additional funds coming in for our assessment for 2024 and those are still in progress. But overall, we received what we budgeted for, so that's good. In our expenses, which if you look in the bottom right corner, this is our overall budget. The first big circle is what was spent versus what was not spent. So there was about $77,000 not spent from our budget last year. There were a few things that happened to accommodate for that, but typically, we do not spend all of our budget. But we do have a rollover ability, so any funds that are not used stay within our program. They don't go anywhere else. And then of the funds that we spend, about 75% is always our labor. And then we have our inter-fund services. So the light gray triangle is the funds that go to different county departments for services, whether it be IT or insurance or whatnot. Our dark gray is other services. And then our little teeny tiny triangle is our supplies. So as you can see, most of our funds are spent in staff time, working to educate our landowners. The bar chart that you see is our cash flow, investments, and our reserve fund over time. And so because we received most of our funds in April or October, those are the high spikes that you can see. And we're constantly comparing ourselves to where we were at this point last year and two years ago so that we can make sure that we're not seeing a downward trend. We'd like this trend to remain relatively stable. But we are, the last year, at a slight increase. Since we do have a new staff position coming on this year, I expect that next year's trend will be a slight decrease. So our board is constantly monitoring our financials in this capacity to make sure that we're balancing and not going over budget and spending our funds responsibly. I think, next slide. All right, as I mentioned, this is the special assessment rates. So the noxious weed law dictates that forest parcels must be assessed at 1/10 the rate of a non-forest parcel. So we have forest parcels and non-forest parcels. The non-forest rate is $8 per parcel and 30 cents per acre. For an average five-acre parcel, one would be paying about $9.50 a year towards our program within our special assessments. The forest rate is then 80 cents per parcel and 3 cents per acre. I did not calculate an average since they're not usually five acres, but they pay significantly less because of the state law, so.
How many acres in the county fall into that last rate?
I would love to have a number for you on that, but I don't. I want to say about 60% of our land is in forestry. I could be wrong on that. I'll get back to you on that number.
Okay.
Next slide. That is the end of my presentation. Happy to take questions now. A little fun, stop the weeds, catch seeds. Think about it in your daily life. Is it on your dog? Is it on your tires, your shoes? Stop them before they start, so. And if you go to the next slide, I have my contact information up for anybody who has future questions. Is there any other ponderings for you today?
Great job.
Thank you. Well, I really appreciate your support all throughout the year. I know I come for various reasons, but this is our annual, this is how we're doing, how we're measuring ourselves. I think I gave a similar presentation last August. Those metrics are difficult to collect mid-season because nothing is complete. So I'd like to forego our August metrics of this and focus with Kathy on the financials in August. But I'll try to do this presentation about once a year so that you can catch up.
I know when the Johnson Ridge, when that bridge went out, it created some issues for you up there. Have you been, I see you're still working up there, so you found a way around or you just know?
No, we just work in different areas. We haven't been able to access Johnston Ridge. You could access it by trail with the equipment that our crew carries and the distance that they're able to cover. You could access it by trail with the equipment that our crew carries and the distance that they're able to cover. They treated as far as they could out the boundary trail from the hammocks in the time that they had. But of course, if you're carrying a backpack, you're going to start treating what you see first and then go back for more and pick up where you left off. And they were not able to make it to Johnston Ridge with the amount of weeds we have.
To give you access again, they better increase their amount to you.
Yeah, I hope so. I have no control over what they fund us, but always asking for assistance on that one. So hopefully, we can get some better resources for that in the future.
But when you talk about St. Helens, does it include the institute? I mean, the visitor center or whatever you want to call that up there, so you're.
Yeah, we've been in conversation with them about who's going to be responsible going forward for the weed control immediately around the institute. And we made some progress last year with education and trying to point out which weeds needed to be controlled versus just general vegetation that could exist. But I think sometimes staff changes and stuff, so I want to have that conversation again with them before May, when we start our treatments up there. So we have everything all coordinated.
Okay, great, thanks Jennifer. Rent horses and a pack mule and take off on the trail.
I would love that. There are some restrictions that don't allow us to do that kind of thing. Because it's a monument, we're not allowed to have anything that's not carried on your back. So we can't take any powered equipment or the animals because of the monument status. It's different than the backcountry status.
You can't take horses?
Not to my knowledge, within the monument.
What do they do about the elk walking around? Elk caboose too.
Well, those are, those are natural animals versus a horse would be.
Maybe you can train an elk, throw a saddle on it, there you go.
I can ask again. I would love to take a horse out there to help us with our treatments. But it hasn't, hasn't been something that I've found to be approved yet, so.
Yeah.
I'll ask again, why not? We also asked about drone treatments because that would be very effective. And it would actually provide a lesser of an impact if we're not actually walking on the land that we're trying to treat. But there are also drone restrictions within the monument. So we haven't made any progress with even surveying with a drone. So maybe in the future, maybe things will change. I'll keep you posted.
I'd be interested to see how you do a drone treatment because of the downwash from the props on the drones, going to blast that spray everywhere.
Well, in some cases, our weeds are everywhere, so it could be a really effective treatment.
Yeah, affect a lot more than just one.
The drone treatments that I've learned about have been very targeted. It's actually amazing how targeted they can be with the products that they have, so.
Okay.
It's impressive, something I don't have the ability to do now, but it's impressive.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. You know where to find me if you have further questions.
In your new home, right? Kathy?
Good morning. Is it on? Does it, is it on? Does it sound right? Okay, Kathy Funk-Mexter, Finance Director. And we have a present, this is our once-a-month update. Okay, next slide. So this first slide is some of our significant funds, some of the larger funds for the county. General Fund, of course, is our largest one. Year-to-date revenues, because of timing and things like that. The largest revenue that we have in the General Fund coming in is our property taxes. And those don't start materializing until April and October, the two large inflows there. So anyway, so you'll see only about $2 million worth of revenue so far this year. And then we have a little over $10 million of expenses. That's unusually high for January, and January's a month where all of our service department expenses are paid for risk management, IT, things like that. So that's why it's larger than a typical month. So it's showing a deficit of a little over $8 million. But that's, you know, we have fund balance to help us cover those fluctuations in the cash flow. Our county road, the revenue is a little over 400,000 for January, and our expenses are almost 2 million, 1.9 million dollars. Again, they pay their service department expenses in the month of January. Health Department, their revenues and expenses are pretty close to break even. And then building and planning, their revenues, almost 200,000 and their expenses were 570. Those are also skewed, as I said, because of service department expenses that are booked in the month of January.
Kathy, real quick.
Yes.
Go back to the General Fund. You say, you're saying that it's unusually high because it's January and we pay those expenses. You didn't say this January is unusually high though, right?
This, this January is, and I'll go over that in detail a little bit because I have all the expenses to show you for the month of January. But our internal services expenses, which we budgeted to be higher than 2024, they were higher, yes.
This is typical of every year?
This is typical of every year. January is the month where we pay our internal service department bills.
Okay.
Okay, next slide. Okay, small numbers, but these are our revenues at a glance for some of our major areas, mostly General Fund and the Road Fund that I'm showing here. We have on, now this is unusual because you look at 2024 and you see lots of negatives. Well, that's because of the accrual period and the postings on the financials that we do. We record a reversal of the prior year. And so 2024 revenues are mostly negative because of that 2023 accrual that's reversed in January. So you're not going to get a good comparison on our revenues 23 versus January of '24 because for '25, I'm sorry, '25 and '24, for '25, we have not booked our reversal yet, our accrual entries. So those will happen here and then towards the end of February or in March.
So just so I understand what you're saying, so we're starting off negative because of the accruals from the previous year that we haven't received yet?
Right, yeah, for '24. '24 shows that they reverse, you receive money in in January, but you're reversing out, and it's primarily our sales tax activity because sales tax is two months behind when we, when we receive it. So for example, in the month of February, we're actually receiving sales tax. It was for the month of December. And so the, all the accruals are reversing at the beginning of the year.
And is that compounded by the fact that we pay everything in January?
Sort of, but, but this is revenue, so. Yeah, so. So for 2025, it's showing currently, it's showing the revenues that we've received. When you look at sales tax, that's primarily, that sales tax number is actually my, our November receipt that was received in January. Personal, on the personal property tax, we're showing that we received $40,000. And I'll show you in a little bit, that's the detail on that. That's actual collections for prior year property tax that are still outstanding. Nothing's been received so far for 2025's property tax assessments. And on the General Fund, we also wanted to show some of the larger other expenses other than just taxes. We, the privilege tax, we don't receive that till later in the year. That's why you're seeing nothing coming in yet. We have a criminal justice for the Sheriff's Department. They have some billings there. They, they bill out about a million two. And so they build out 300,000 in the month of January quarterly. And it compares to what we had for the prior year at this time. And then jail booking fees. This is the cities as well as what we expect for, I guess it's DOJ, I believe. But so we expect to receive for the whole year about a million five, and we received in January 200,000. Last year's is a negative because the receipts from the cities are a little bit behind. So that was, that's an accrual, reversing an accrual. So not a lot in the way of revenues coming in, as you saw in the first slide, a little over $2 million in total. The majority of those are these categories, taxes and intergovernmental and our goods and services. So for Road Fund, the largest amount of revenue they received in January was the motor vehicle fuel tax, a little over 300,000. But that's going to end up being reversed because that's actually a receipt for prior year, so. This was a little, little different to look at because I don't have a good comparison because of all the negatives on the accruals.
At what point in the year does that, do we start to see that flip?
Yeah. Well, it'll, in March, I'll receive the first receipt on sales tax. That's for 2025, which will be our January earnings.
Takes about a quarter.
Yeah. Next slide, the expenses. For expenses for General Fund, as we showed you on the beginning slide, we have a little over 10 million that's been expensed in January. And when you look at prior year, our salaries, our personnel costs are very comparable. Our services are a little over 6.8 million, and in prior year, they were 5.3 million. And this is, again, most of our internal services increased for 2025 versus 2024. Then we have some negatives of 2024 because those are reversals for financial entries that are made for, mostly for the leases and the speedas, the subscription-based entries. And those, of course, are not happening yet in 2025. So fairly comparable, other than for services, an increase.
What are transfers?
Transfers, we have several different transfers. The largest transfers in the General Fund have to do with debt servicing on our landfill, which is a $22 million bond. So most of that 3 million budget is our debt servicing, where we transfer the money to a different fund to pay the debt. And we support some different, we subsidize some of the other specialized. The 75,000 right there was a subsidy for, I believe, for the victim, Prosecuting Attorney's Victim Witness Program, and so we help subsidize that. Building and planning on their expenses, they're very consistent with the prior year expenses. Their, this transfer was, I think, a special correction entry last year. So that's why it's not repeating in 2025. On the county road, personnel, very comparable to last year. Services are higher than last year, but this is because they were paid in January of 2025. And last year, they were actually paid in February of 2024. So that's not showing a good comparison because of the timing difference on that one. So we did our research to make sure that once, once it's, once we hit February, we'll be more comparable year-to-date. And then on the Health Department, the expenses for personnel are fairly comparable to last year. The supplies are a little less than last year. And then services are pretty consistent with last year. Then again, they also have a reversal, a negative for their capital and debt, and that has to do with the financial reversal that was made in January. So we'll be tracking these every month to make sure that if there's anything unusual, I'll let you know about it or bring you, or be able to explain it for you on these financials. Things will look different once we get into February and March. Next slide. This is the property taxes. We'll show every month what's outstanding and what's been collected for the month and year-to-date. For the month of January, the month and year-to-date is the same, but there's no collections on the 2025 property assessments. But you'll see that we collected property taxes for 2024's outstanding balance, 2023, 2022, and just a little bit for 2021. So, you know, that's, that's typical for this time of the year. Okay, on the next one, as of last Friday, this is, this is all the data that I had, but I handed out a sheet to you that's on the desk, on your desk, that's more updated because I was able to pull down and get the numbers for December. And so, you know, the good news is that as of, through the 12 months sales tax, we collected 11, a little over 11.5 million. We had in the budget for 2024, 11.4 million budgeted. Bad news is that compared to 2023, our sales tax revenues are down 1.1 million dollars. So we did, for the 2025 budget, we adjusted our 2025 budget to be flat with 2024, to say no increase over 2024. Just hoping that there won't be any decrease over 2024. So that's where we're at on sales tax.
And you, you kept it flat because you identified what that decline, what the decrease was?
That decline was primarily new construction, sales tax revenues related to new construction projects.
Retail side of it was, stayed fairly strong.
Yeah, it stayed fairly strong, stable. Next one is our recording fees, so that we have a little bit of good news here. We're also now showing a three-year trend for you. So for the month of January, the recording fee, number of transactions increased by 8% over '24. And then the next slide shows the actual fee income, and it increased 11% over 2024. And the good news is, when I analyzed 2024 versus 2023, I didn't, I should have put a total here so you could see, but the two years are fairly flat. They're not, you know, we saw some decreases in a couple of months, but, but they're actually a little bit higher than 2023 overall, so. I think January was the only month, '23, '24, that was below, below what we had in the previous year. And then we, well, we started stabilizing except for June. But overall, in total, '23 to '24 tracks very comparably without a decrease.
Is there anything we can do, like in this situation, to where we increase the, the number? Is there anything we can do, like in this situation, to where we increase the, the number of document recording fees, that, that actual number? And the, the margin, if you will, the, the, the revenue is up 11%. Is there anything we can do to de, to increase that? You know what I mean? To, to increase the, the percentage of revenue?
I don't, I don't think so. These are your revenues, these are, the recording fees are set by the state.
So there's no way to increase margin?
Yeah, I don't, I don't think so. And that's it. That's all I have for this presentation for our financials.
Okay. Like you said, they'll start making more sense as we get down the road a little bit. Because I know January is always heavy, heavy in the service. We bill it off one time.
Right.
Little encouraged it to, seems like we got a better handle on what the sales tax is going to do. And encourage to see there's, there has to be some growth in, in housing if we're seeing some doc fees go up. Because that's really generated by activities.
By real est, by, by real estate activity.
Yeah, so that's, has some encouragement there. I like seeing that. Right. Well, I see you're first on the list if we talk.
I'm just not going to get up. I'm first on the list. We are going to have tomorrow, we had our schedule for a public hearing on our budget amendment. And I did, I don't know if you had a chance to look at it. My printout was really small, so I decided not to do it as a presentation. But I really, you know, we have quite a few little things that are moving around. But in total, on the general fund, one of the biggest things that I'm accounting for is that last year in 2024, we had a subsidized for the risk management to help them pay their annual assessment. They were, they had to pay 12 months of annual assessment when typically they'd been paying like three-fourths of it in the month of October.
That's right, because they changed their assessment date.
Right, they changed their assessment date, which we're, we're very happy. Because now their assessments are going to be based upon a calendar year, like all of our budgets. So that helps us. But we had a one-time situation. Well, risk management's going to be paying back that subsidy. And so in the month of Jan, for the month of February, we're going to, we're counting for that in our fund balance. So it's showing that our fund balance for the general fund is going up. And, and risk management will have a smaller bill to pay in 2025. But we're going to collect our assessments as if there's 12 months worth of assessments for our departments, for the internal billings. So that's the majority of our change on our general fund. There's a lot of other changes, small changes here and there. We did go back through all of our personnel action items. And when we made the budget, anything that happened in the month of December that was approved, we actually did not have those full numbers in our budget, but they're very minor in most cases. And so we're adjusting all of our personnel and benefits to make sure we had everything correct and up to date. And so we have some of those. We also have departments that were approved for certain budget expenditures in 2024 that didn't happen in 2024, but they're going to happen now in 2025. So therefore, I need to bring forward that budget that was not spent in 2024. A good example is the jail had RFID project for the inmates. And that project, they didn't get everything finished. And so it's going to happen in 2025. So they had a budget line, but they didn't expend it in 2024. They'll expend it in 2025. The same thing for Superior Court, that Hall of Justice project where we're receiving funds from the state. That project was not, we hoped it would have been completed in 2024. But it moved over and it was finished, actually I hope it's finished this month. And so we have $84,000 of expenses that will hit 2025 instead. And then we also had a, you previously approved a cafe to be funded in the interim from general fund to subsidy. We weren't able to do that last year because we didn't have all of our equipment and everything like that identified. And so that transfer is going to happen in 2025 instead. But it was, it was approved in 2024. So there's, there's a few items like that. There's also some grants that were not in the 2025 budget when we originally loaded it that we received. And that's primarily from the sheriff's area. So there's a few grants showing as revenue as well and the corresponding expenses. So. So for general fund, the good news is it's, the balance is going up in total, 471,000.
On that cafe, we were just planning on that being revenue neutral, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. But we had to start off, we needed to start off with buying some of the equipment and getting the supplies before we start generating the sales. And we had planned to pay that 10,000 back to the general fund. On other funds, special revenue funds, most of these are, there's little, there's no impact. It's just moving funds from one line to another. For example, in law, for law and justice, there was also $40,000 worth of outfitting for a sheriff's vehicle that wasn't expended in '24, but we're going to expend it in '25. So it's already been approved, but we're bringing it forward as a new, new line in 2025. Couple of other things we had planned for IT to have some ARPA funds for 2025. But they went ahead and expended them all in 2024. So to get complete and finished. So things like that. And also the, the Expo Center, they had budgeted $50,000 transfer from their gift shop to the Expo Center last year. But they didn't transact that item. And so they're going to do it, they're going to actually catch up and do it in 2025 as well as their regular $50,000 for 2025. So we had to amend the budget for that. Then, like I said, the only other, the only other major thing is the, the risk management paying back the general fund. And we have a couple of items in IT for $77,000 that we didn't anticipate running through IT. We thought we were going to establish a new fund for the sheriff's department for equipment, but we're not going to do that right now. And so we're putting it back into the IT budget. So that was it on budget amendment. Looks like a lot, if you, if you looked at the handout or the attachment in the agenda item. We also are going to, PFD is going to be here this week to talk about their master plan. And one of the things is that they asked for some corrections when we loaded up their budget. And we're, we're pushing those through to correct it. And one of the items was that they wanted to establish a new fund for the construction of Phase One. And so we didn't put that in the budget because they asked us to hold off on it until they had their plans finalized for the refinancing of the bond. And so now they're ready for us to establish a new fund for their construction activity for 2025. Any questions for me?
That's all for the public hearing tomorrow.
Yep, that's all for the public hearing tomorrow. We're going to, I'm going to also amend the resolution to actually ask for establishment of that new construction fund for the PFD.
This capital improvement and preservation policy, that's?
No, that's not me.
Okay.
Okay, that's all I have.
Happy.
Okay. Facilities.
Good morning, Commissioners. Sean Rowey, Public Works. First item I have up for you is number one on the consent agenda. It's going to be a contract with Weather Guard for on-call roof repair and maintenance services. This is a contract to not exceed $100,000. We don't expect to spend the full value, but we want to have it if needed, if there's. You find a leak and you keep digging, you never know what you might find in there sometimes.
This is reoccurring, right?
Yeah, so this is part of the.
Several years with him.
So this is the first time we've done the on-call contract like this.
Okay.
This is very similar to what we did earlier in the year, similar with the HVAC items in plumbing we've done in the past.
And after tonight's windstorm, we might need it tomorrow.
You, you never know what you're going to find.
Yeah.
Savannah Clement, Public Services. Just to add on to that, it does, you, you alluded to something good because it's, instead of having to consider this an emergency and get some repairs out, we have someone we can call, we've gone through the purchasing requirements, we have a signed contract. So not everything has to be that emergency to be, in order to get somebody in to help us fix these types of things. So.
If it's an emergency, then we have to prove it. We have to.
Right.
Pass a resolution and like we did.
If it's, if it's that level, yes, yeah. And they're highly scrutinized by the state auditor because it bypasses purchasing. And so it's just, it's a headache that we can avoid by doing on-call contracts like this. Okay. The other item that we have on the agenda for tomorrow is the capital and tenant improvement policy. I've been in front of the board a couple of times on this one, and this is really the, the cleanup policy from our previous one that had a lot of stipulations in place that we weren't really actively doing as a committee or, or by department. So just gave an opportunity to clean it up a little bit, streamline the process, identify really clear timelines, and then establish clear forms for departments to use.
So this is the, the one, what do we set aside, 250?
Yes, yep, that's correct.
250 and departments can initiate what they feel.
Yes, it gives them some, some autonomy to, to tell us what their projects are, tell us what they'd like to improve. And then it goes through a scoring, ranking, and then presentation process with the board. I do want to add, part of the policy incorporated, a space allocation form. There is a separate space allocation policy. So after this policy is enacted, hopefully tomorrow, we will probably be coming forward just rescinding the space allocation. We've, we've incorporated into this new policy. We've got the form. We, I'll work with Kelly, but we'll probably be able to rescind that other policy that's just kind of a filler now. So just a heads up. I think that's all we have for facilities and, and Public Works.
Is that it for you guys tomorrow?
Yeah.
Wow.
I know.
Sure.
I will add, thank you, Sean, for the reminder. We have a 42-year, 42-tenured employee, Gary Gonzer, retiring. His, his last day is actually just the end of this month, and so we're doing his retirement party tomorrow from 1:00 to 3:00 at the Public Works Training Room. So he started here in 1983 full-time. Before that, he was actually a summer help. So he wasn't considered a permanent employee, otherwise we could add a year or two and on to that. So, kind of cool.
He's probably got some stories to tell.
He does. I have a, I have one story I'm going to tell tomorrow, actually a Gary story, which is, is kind of fun. But yes, Gary, I mean, Gary's an awesome, an awesome person, an awesome employee. He kind of, to me, epitomizes public service, right, for the people, making sure that he's, we're running these contracts. He was our construction manager, is our construction manager. And he oversaw the management of all of our projects for, I think, 30 of the 42 years. So just a really, a stickler for detail, making sure that, that the county's not done wrong and making sure we're spending those public funds wisely. So, yeah.
Well, I know I have it on my calendar.
Awesome, great. That'd be fantastic. So. All we have?
Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't know if anybody from the sheriffs is on. Katrina?
Good morning, can you hear me?
We can, yes. Loud and clear.
Ours is pretty easy. We just put the two amendments to the Humane Society on there that you authorized the sheriff to sign so that we'd be on public record. So they're already in place. We just want to make sure that, you know, they're, stay on public record.
And talking to the sheriff last week, I think, I think Jason's back Wednesday. So we should see a contract here probably shortly after that, but we just need to extend our, our current one, right?
That's what I understand.
Yeah. Okay.
Hey, thank you.
Uh huh, thank you. Did you say Travis was on?
Good morning, can you hear me?
Hi Travis.
Hi, good morning. This is Travis Haskini, IT Director, and I'm presenting a request for WWT's Professional Services. This would be to engage or with them to enhance our phone system. Enhancements are primarily to implement soft phones and SIP phone services. Soft phones will enable remote workers to use their phones, their office phones in alternate locations. It's especially helpful this year during the HRJ building renovations. SIP services are used to modernize our phone services and replace aging PRI services that are more costly and difficult to operate. This is a non-recurring expense, one time, and it's based on hours used. And so we're requesting $12,560 or up to that, depending on amount of time need.
So this is a, a one-time cost?
Correct, one-time cost.
There's no yearly licensing fees or anything?
No, we've already paid the licensing fees when we purchased the phone system last year. Say last year, it might have been two years ago now, but yeah, those were already included at this point. This was intended to be done as, as a later phase, and we're now getting back to that.
Okay.
We also reviewed this request, but then had some minor contract revisions. We also brought a similar request, but didn't finalize it, I think, in November, December of last year. So now that the contract terms are agreed to, we're just revisiting it, finishing it off.
Okay. Sounds good.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm good. Thank you. One other item to take care of before we head into the next side is because of the way our policy states, we need to approve a travel for commissar referral to the NACO conference. We all good with that? Okay. That work for you? Okay. Okay. Look and see if I have anything else sitting here. Yeah, go ahead and ask her, I might have a question for, for Tracy here. And I haven't had a chance to read through this, but I'd, I'd kind of like your opinion on it. There's a, there's a Senate Bill fifty-seven twenty-nine. Are you familiar with it a little bit? I pulled it up this morning to, to look at it, and basically it's, it's titled streamline permitting process. And the way it was explained to me is that if, say in Cows County, we have a Cows County engineer design some plans, the theory is that they go by, they know our codes, they go by our codes. And once they design the plans, it's permit approved, it's not subject to then county review. And I know WASCAC is opposing this, and I'm trying to understand why.
Is this, this is the, forgive me, this is the other Senate bill, right, the House bill? There's two, one's timelines, is that that bill, or is there one, this is in addition to?
Right.
Okay, I'm not familiar with exact language on that one.
Okay, so, and I just printed it this morning, I have a chance to look at it.
Hey, I need to look at it too.
Yeah, do you want to look at that, so you can kind of give me your gut what you think on that? Because just on the service, we've talked about this before, I know you guys have some reservations, but if we have a engineer that's licensed in our county and knows our codes, I don't know why it would.
I agree with that statement, but then I also can disagree with that statement. A lot of times they get lax in what they provide, or they don't, they, the code changes, they don't comply with a new code. Some, we're just trying to keep everybody on the straight and narrow, so sometimes.
It was introduced in the.
They say they're abiding by cords.
Along quicker, and I.
Right. And I'll have to take a look at that.
Yeah, so if you don't mind, and I'll look at it too, see if I see anything in there. It just piqued my interest when I was on the phone with WASCAC on the LSC thing, and this came up, and, and they were opposing it, and right off the top of my head, I'm going, why would we just blanket a?
What were their, what were their reasons for not being happy with that bill?
Like the county didn't have a say.
Okay.
Do we need a say in that case, though?
Well.
Well, you might.
That, that's the conversation, I think. So that's why I wanted to just, I want you to look at it, and so you can give me some honest feedback on it when we look at it.
And to go about the other House bill with the timeline and the, I have not seen your resolution, so I don't know what's being proposed.
We have a resolution that Doug tweaked for me.
Okay.
And we will bring it into a workshop and get all your guys' opinion on it, but we haven't set that yet.
Okay. But just, so we, we like to, we're all about timelines and getting them in and out as fast as we possibly can. And right now, just to kind of like counter that thirteen day or whatever it is, the timeline, a lot of times we try to do that wraparound services where we would take it in and we work and we massage through the applicant process. And sometimes we go as gray as we can on regulations to get their application approved to what meets current codes and what the applicant can live with. And it, sometimes it's like pulling teeth, but we really try to do that wraparound services to try to keep the processes moving. But it's not always at thirteen days, and that's my fear. If we, excuse me.
I don't think we're stuck on any days, I think the conversation with you guys.
And I'm just putting that out there, that if it's kind of like a hard and fast, like you need it out by that date, we're all about that, we're trying to do it within, you know, our current timelines. However, we do, if it's, we're going to have to be harder at the front end to kind of be, you know, we need everything in order before we can take it in, if that shot clock's going to start. To where right now, we take them in and we, like I said, we massage through as much as we can to try to get the applicant in compliance, but also to issue their permits. So there is a counter to that other side, is, it will change what we do at the counter.
Or we just have to be so, so specific on what's a complete package.
Yes, and that will hold them up at the counter, and then they'll come up here and complain. So what we try to do is we try to bring them in, and it's like a catch twenty-two. We try to do the other end of it because we're trying to work their permit through the process the best we can. So we can get specifics, but sometimes it takes the applicant quite a while to get those specifics that we need, so, we do try.
Yeah, well, that's why we'll have a discussion with her.
We look forward to it.
Okay, thanks. Anything in particular, or do you want to head right into HR? I'm good with that? Jessica, thanks for popping in a little early.
Good morning, Jessica Warren, Human Resources. I just have a couple of requests. The first comes from Building and Planning, requesting to fill a permit specialist position. The current employee is moving back home out of state, so. I know.
Yeah, how dare them.
It is.
He going back to Arizona? Well, now he's Arizona, you tell him, I'll go down and tell him, now he's Arizona's problem.
And they're also requesting three weeks overlap if they could, for training purposes.
To get somebody trained. I'm, I'm good with it. Does he have to register with Arizona before he crosses the border?
So are we, you're requesting to fill a position that's going to be vacant?
Correct, yes.
Do we typically request to fill a position that's going to be vacant that we already have, that we've already budgeted for? Is that how, is that the policy?
It's been done different in the past. When I started here, positions weren't requested if they were currently budgeted. That was back in two thousand eighteen, but it's changed to now, all departments that have vacant positions, we have to come and request that those vacant positions are filled. It's different for elected offices, we don't request to fill those budgeted positions.
Well, is this request to replace him, or actually because of the three-week overlap you're asking for?
The three-week overlap would be a, a separate request, but we do have to request to fill the current position as well.
Okay. Interesting.
So that's something that we would change if the board gave direction on how we make those requests, but that was the previous direction. Next request is for, it's that time of year, requesting to fill summer hire intern positions. Salary that we're requesting is hourly rate of eighteen fifty an hour for new summer hires and twenty fifty an hour for returning summer hires that previously worked here. Public Works is requesting twenty positions, IT is requesting two, Office of Administrative Services slash Risk Management is requesting one, and Department of Emergency Management is requesting one. And we typically start advertising for summer help this time of year because it takes several months to get all the kids interviewed and ready to go, but they typically start sometimes as early as May or as late as June.
What kind of requirements are there for summer help? Can they still be in high school? They got to be seventeen, they have to have a driver's license?
They have to have a driver's license, have graduated high school or will be graduating high school, and then currently enrolled in college vocational type studies or planning to enroll.
I did it for the CDS Centroy Road Department when I was going to school.
Yeah, it's a great program to gain work experience.
That's why I know what snivien is. Yeah, I think the summer helps are, are assets, I think they're.
I did, absolutely.
We always had good luck with them at the credit union and.
Yeah, we utilized one last year and got a lot of records retention stuff taken care of. I think we ended up getting rid of like ninety boxes of records that we could get rid of. So it was a great summer for HR because we had a lot of records sitting out in our archives, so.
Yeah, we're all, looks like we're all good with it, so.
Okay, thank you. And that's all I got.
Okay.
That was easy.
Volunteer boards and committees, Sean, I see you on solid ways. I think we, we talked about this a little bit, this gentleman is, currently sits on there, and we're just looking at reappointment.
Yeah, we've, we've went over a little bit of the basics of the SWAC committee a few weeks ago with the previous appointment. I believe this one is for Mr. Brugman, is that correct? So he has been on the board for some time and has worked in the citizen position, has gave good input. I believe his background is he was a science teacher at Tootle School District.
High school science teacher retired.
Yeah, and he still lives within the Tootle area, is my understanding as well.
Any issues? I don't see any. Okay.
Guys make it too easy for me.
We will do that, thank you.
Thank you.
I don't, Mike's not here, but he sent in and he's, we met Mike from Mosquito District. He came in and he's suggesting that we reappoint Mr. Ogden. He said he's been, works on the committee well, that we should, we'd be okay with that.
Yep.
Ms. Kim? This one, we didn't think you had any openings, right? So you had one pop up, and so we called the two people that we had sent letters to that we had not appointed. So you have a, a Mr. Nichols here and, and Ms. Hector. Do you have one of them that, has somebody been working with you?
Um, yes, so, so both applicants are or have been involved with our rodeo in some capacity over the last several years. The one that stands out to me has actually participated, has actually called, asking when we would be having work parties. He really wanted to be involved and has shown up to several work parties over the last couple of years unsolicited. And so he's the, one of the two applicants that stood out to me.
That's Mr. Nichols. Somebody that shows that kind of interest would be somebody I'd be good with.
These are both applying for the one position.
Correct, and we would be lucky to have both, either one of them. But the one that stood out between the two, like I said, is the one that's actually been coming to the different work parties that we've had throughout the year. And it's probably been, I know that at least the last two years, probably three years. The other applicant does help during the rodeo a little bit with her business, she helps, but does not attend anything else outside of that.
Still Mr. Nichols?
Mr. Nichols?
Yeah.
Okay, we'll appoint Mr. Nichols, and if an opening comes up, I mean, at some point in time, she'll probably get an opportunity.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Think I checked all my marks. Anything else, gentlemen? Okay, anything else from your side? We're all good? Okay, we will adjourn, thank you.